So thanks for coming today like you had a choice, right? But appreciate you being here. I'm Julie Persha and I see a lot of former students here. Hi guys, how are you? Nice to see you again. And a lot of you haven't had the chance to meet. And the reason that you're here is because we want to get you going on a new initiative through the marketing department that is all about you. And it's called Market You. And we launched it in January with the intention of putting the tools in your hands to get yourself knowledgeable about marketing, dialed into internships, and on the right track for a full-time position next year. Okay? We're putting everything all in one spot for you and making it as easy as is humanly possible for you to get in and get involved. Okay? So why Market You? We've had a couple people say, comment on the terminology. "You" is meant to be two things. First of all, it's meant to be "you," university, right? We're at a university, just in case you hadn't noticed, in between hangovers, right? Second, just kidding, I'm just kidding. Second of all, this really is about you. This isn't about the finance majors, this isn't about the accounting majors, it's not about the management majors, not that we don't love them, but it's about you guys. And the reason that it's about you guys is several fold. What we heard from marketing majors in the past is that there were several things that you guys struggled with. First of all, that there was a lot of diversity in the field, that there were a lot of options to choose from in terms of jobs and internships. And so for a lot of people, it was hard to kind of narrow down. All right? The second thing that we heard was that it was even harder to identify positions. Because we're not set up in the same way as some of the other disciplines, we don't have a limited pool of companies that come in and hire a big whack of people. Okay? And we'll talk about that and how that works. But that makes it more challenging for you guys to try to find out what you want to do and who you want to do it for. Some of you are just plain unsure about how to conduct a job search. And a lot of times, that's because of these first two points. Okay? It's confusing, it's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of information, you guys have a lot of things that are demanding your attention. I get that. And actually, our whole department gets that. And then the last thing was that our faculty doesn't seem as involved as some of the other faculty. Well, we're about to change that. Today is kind of an odd case. When I scheduled this meeting, one of our premier research faculty members in our department had scheduled last year a meeting for the same day where there's a research presentation going on. So normally, we would have our whole faculty here, or at least as many as could attend. Today, we are, we have a couple people representing. So we have Mr. Mullen. How many of you guys have taken a class with Mr. Mullen? He rocks, no mess, right? So he's here. And then Greg Bonner. And you've hopefully all met Dr. Bonner, right? Chair of the marketing department. And he's gonna have to duck out in a minute and go back to said research presentation with fancy schmancy person here. Okay? It's not that he doesn't love you, it's just how it goes. Okay? Additionally, from the Clay Center, we have Brenda Stover, who heads up the professional development team, and one of her key people, Christine Della Pena. You need to get to know Christine, and later this afternoon, you'll have a chance to meet Jen Mullen. They are the two people that drive internships and co-ops here in VSB. You need to get to know them, you need to make them your friend, and treat them very nicely, because they will go out of their way to help you out. And last of all, we have one of my favorite people on campus now, Kevin Grubb, who's here from the undergraduate career center. How many of you guys have been to the undergraduate career center?
Oh my gosh, more.
Next time, next time I see you, we need all hands up. First of all, it's gorgeous. I walked in, I was like, nice carpet, right? It's completely redone, it's in Geary Hall. Thumbs up, it is, it was very nice carpet. But second of all, again, there's a staff there that is ready to go to the mat for you guys. Every resource possible, they'll help you learn how to use it. Every job that's out there, they'll help you learn how to get it. Okay? So next time I ask, lie to me and tell me that you all been. But in reality, I'd really like for you to go. It's a good spot, it's comfy, and they have treats there too. And Kevin, okay?
Dr. Persha said I have to run back to this other meeting, but believe it, let me say, the effort put forth already by these people this year, last year at this time, with more marketing seniors than we have this year, last year we had about 14 jobs at this time, kids placed. Right now, we have 28 already this year. We have 28 kids in really good positions and been hired already for next summer. So we're, we're, we're really at 200% this year where we were last year. And, you know, we've got momentum going, and for you, being juniors, they're gonna talk about this today, so I'll let Dr. Persha talk about it. But it's really a time to get rolling on this. Our goal next year is to have everybody, you know, if they really want to work out, get you placed by the time you graduate. That's what we want, we're gonna look towards that, okay? So, you know, good luck, make sure you pay attention, if you want to present, a lot of you've had her, and see, she's got a lot of good stuff to say. And I'll, I'll see some of you next fall, probably marketing mag, those of you that like to get up early.
Okay? So it's game on for us, basically, is where we're at, all right? So here's the deal. First thing, I want you to be clear about a couple of things. There's a different hiring cycle than some of the other disciplines in the building. Sometimes that's surprising to students. There's a variety of different ways that marketing jobs are organized. On campus here, sometimes we'll have companies that will come in looking for people for organized internships and long-term job training programs. Okay? These are formalized programs where they come in, they hire us every year, and they hire, you know, two, four, six people every year. Okay? Not 30 or 40, but two, four, six people. There are co-op positions during the semester, there's part-time positions that you can work in while you are going to school, 10 to 12 hours a week, we'll talk about that in a second. And then there's individual positions by company. Okay? The bulk of our hires go to individual positions by company, we'll talk about that in a second. But the most important thing to think about is that this is a different hiring cycle than accounting and finance, for example, and you cannot freak out about the fact that this is the case. Okay? It's not better, it's not worse, it is what it is. So there's companies that come here in the fall, these are just a few, and they recruit for formalized, full-time, or internship positions. They hire systematically, you know that they're gonna show up, and you know how many people they're gonna hire. Look at these brands, awesome brands to work for. Okay? So this is happening in the fall semester. However, most of our hiring takes place in the spring, sometimes as late as March or April. Again, which freaks everybody out, right? Because you're sitting next to your roommate who's working in accounting and finance, and Mark, when did they get a job? Long time ago, right? They're like, hey, hey. Stay calm, it'll come. Okay? It's just a little bit different. The other thing that's different is that hiring firms may not repeat year to year. So you're gonna get a different pool, oftentimes, from year one to year two to year three. Okay? It's not the same four firms that are always coming through. New firms show up all the time, which is nice. And after one or two, often, it's only one or two marketing positions that are open per company. Okay? So again, not these big giant hires. However, look at some of the companies that have come and hired us, Villanova people, for both part-time, or sorry, internship and full-time work. These are not schlocky brands. Okay? These companies have got it going on, and we've had some terrific placement over the last few years. So these jobs are out there, but it is really in your hands to help us help you. Okay? Here's some basic statistics. This is from the class of 2010. It's from a survey that was taken six months out after graduation. Lower response rate, okay? And they're gonna do a follow-up survey 12 months after graduation. We had about 81% of our graduates placed versus 85% employed across all VSB majors. Okay? So we're tracking with all of the other majors. The national average for starting salary is 41.6, we were at 41.2 on average. We placed people as high as 55, we placed people as low as 24. What industries might you think those lower salaries would come from? Where do you think?
Nonprofit work.
Nonprofit work, for sure, absolutely. Where else? What do you think?
Sales position.
Sales position that has commission, sure. So you might get that low starting salary, but then you might have the upside, right, Mr. Mullen?
Bingo.
Bingo. Where else? Notoriously badly paid. Advertising, oh, painful. Talk about that in a second. Starting salaries low. Why do you think they're low? Advertising's cool, it's fun, it's interesting, why low? Come on, come on, come on, why low? Do you think one person wants to work there? No, like, 1 million people want to work there, right? So why would they offer a high salary when you guys are all duking it out over just a few positions? Pushes the salaries down. Sports marketing, another one, pushes those salaries down. We're talking only entry level, however, and I'll talk to you about the trajectory coming up in a second. Okay? So we're tracking right on national average, and you can click, I'll post this, and you can click to get specific information about placement. Okay? So here's the trajectory. With some of these fields, you start low, but you go up like this. Okay? Advertising and sports marketing would be two fields like that, sales would be another. Okay? When you enter into some of the other disciplines, for example, accounting, you might start higher, but your trajectory might be less steep. Okay? So you might start out at a lower salary, but two, three, four years out, those two lines are gonna cross. Okay? So you need to be aware of that. It is what it is. Okay? And just deal. Recognize that if you, if you want to get into some of these industries, that's the price. Okay? But there's a lot of upside over time. So what can you do now? Our goal by the end of this day, between this and the next set of sessions, is to give you some concrete steps that you can take to get after these internships. Okay? We want you on it, in it, and rolling around in it. So here's some stuff that you guys can do. First of all, you can take a look for a part-time internship during the semester, co-op, summer internship, study abroad with internship, nice. One of my students just came back from, she came back from Rome, and went to school very little, hung out quite a lot, and got some great experience. What could be better, right? Additionally, recognize that you can do an internship and earn three credits. You can do an internship and get paid. You can do an internship, earn three credits, and get paid. Not so bad, right? Okay, so let's talk about these. Part-time internships during the school year. There's all kinds that come into the Clay Center, and what happens to them, Brenda and Christine?
They're supposed to go to...
And then what happens?
They sit there and wait for you all to apply to them.
And how often do we have people applying for these part-time internships in social media marketing, PR, advertising, in-house sales?
Probably the easiest way to answer that is that in many, many instances, the local intern, marketing-related internships that Dr. Persha's referring to, the employers are following up with us and saying, "We are not getting enough candidates. Can't you please find other students who might be interested in these internships?" Particularly in the marketing area, the supply far outweighs, the, supply of positions far outweighs the candidates that we can funnel, have been able to funnel into that.
In a down market. Right? And are these internships 40 hours a week?
No.
No. What are they on average?
Eight to 15, eight to 20 hours a week, depending on your schedule and the employer's needs.
Not so bad. So if you need a line item to your resume, this is the way to do it. And some of them are pretty sexy, too. I mean, it's not like, you know, junky stuff, there's some good stuff out there. Here's two. Cadet Group, this is in the Market You newsletter, PR and social media spring internship. Sounds good. Millcrest Law, so if you're a law, if you're thinking about law school, this is marketing communications for a law firm. Okay? So there are just two, there were, I don't know, 30 available. Maybe not that high, but there's a lot. Okay? So great option. Paid and unpaid opportunities. You can apply for a co-op. I realize you guys are heading into your senior year, we actually place a few seniors in a co-op position. Do you guys know what a co-op is? What's a co-op? Tell me. You don't know? Do you know, Paul?
It's just like a work experience...
It is. It is, but it's like work experience squared. Work experience, and I'm so glad you didn't know, because I'm so happy to tell you. Right?
Dr. Persha, we actually have a lot of co-op applicants. Rachel just did a co-op in the spring for her sophomore year.
Tell us.
It's a six-month, full-time paid internship. So you basically, I mean, it depends on if you did the fall or spring, but you sort of work like this fast schedule around it, and you just work full-time for the company for six months.
Did you get paid?
Yeah.
How much did you get paid?
Per hour, it was about $20.
$20 an hour. Net out to what, about $20,000 to $25,000 for the six months? Yeah, trust me on the math on that one. Yeah. 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 Seriously, right?
And our, our co-op program, Christine will tell you a little bit about this later, but our design specifically for VSB students, that you can stay on track, if you complete one to graduate in four years. So it's not as though you were a direct student or an Northeastern student and tax one an extra semester, you stay on track to graduate.
Yeah, and you pretty much stay on campus. There's a couple where you have the, there's one that is with Morgan Stanley that's in New York, that's not a marketing co-op. But others are primarily local, so you still live here, you live on campus, you're hanging with your friends, you're going out on the weekends, right? You're not going to class with them, but you're still in your life. So like, did you see your friends still?
Oh, yeah, all the time.
Yeah, see? See? Yeah, what do you think?
Is it too late for us to do this?
Well, as a matter of fact, I'll tell you. So, okay, a couple, before I move on there. So check this out. DuPont Marketing Communications, which is what Rachel did. Rachel, what were a couple projects that you happened to work on with your experience?
My first project, it was to help write the first draft of the speech.
Okay.
So it was for the president of the business that I was working for, so that was pretty cool.
Yep.
I wrote some drafts, some press releases, got to work on the tree shows, like to set up the certain tree shows, and like some of the print material that went out.
So you were primarily on the PR side and...
A little bit, yeah. It was really characters like what I wanted to do. Like, the first week I sat down with my supervisor, and she pretty much, like, asked me what I wanted to learn about, specifically with marketing.
Yep.
And so it was pretty much, you know, set like as I was going through it, if there was a project that was coming up that I wanted to work on, she would throw me on it if I really showed interest in it.
Awesome. Did you like it?
Loved it.
Yeah, good contacts?
Yeah, definitely.
Super thumbs up, right? Did you, do you know whether you'll be going back there, or would you pursue them again?
Yeah, I still keep an eye contact with a lot of people there, so definitely some good people to talk to there.
Girl can help, right?
Yeah.
All right. So we've got, so we've got DuPont, which is on the marketing communications side, and then there's two co-ops with J&amp;J on the brand management side, and then another on the sales side. Okay? So there's three marketing-specific co-ops. And then there's an accounting and finance co-op, also offered through Johnson &amp; Johnson. There's a co-op in forensic accounting that's offered through the Delaware Valley District Attorney's Office. And there is the Morgan Stanley Operations Management. That needs an econ major, so if you double major, that's another alternative. So here's the dates, right? February 3, and Bartley 2044, so that's next Friday. There's a student panel and employer reception. Do you guys want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. The student panel is basically more of a co-op, like Rachel, basically coming back, kind of telling you a little bit about their experience in these different employment opportunities. The other is, and then basically, right after that, we'll kind of also walk you through kind of eligibility, what do you have to do in terms of working with the Clay Center to kind of set up your co-op experience and everything like that. And then as far as the employer reception, that'll take place right after. We'll have all the employers down in the atrio, and the co-ops that were just on that panel probably, you know, able to talk and mingle and learn more about the opportunities. And then the application deadline for any co-op that you want to apply for will be February 12. So basically, come to that information session, learn about the opportunities, you would then meet with Jen Mullen in our office, just about eligibility, how to get all set up, and then go ahead and apply.
Yep.
And then after that, if you would be selected to interview, all the interviews will take place the week of February 20.
Yep. Okay, so it's coming, you still have some time. And when you're here, this is working of the rap, marketing of oneself, right? Shaking of the hand, smiling? Absolutely. Okay? So this is a great opportunity. Now, there's a couple of other things that you can do. Every week, you should have gotten two already, Market You e-newsletters. I encourage you, to the point that I will drive to your house and hit you in the head if you don't do this, to read this. Because what we try to do is really short and sweet, job of the week, internship of the week, event of the week. How many, did anybody go to the sports? How was it?
Really good.
Yeah. One of my students was the moderator, Nick Lee, and he said it was a really good panel. He said it was a lot of fun. Event of the week, and then we give you something marketing-oriented of the week. So let me just show you a couple of things that we have sent out, because the reason that we're sending these to you is because in addition to being savvy about the different opportunities out there, you need to be savvy about the field in general and what's happening. So you can strike up a conversation in an interview. The worst, most awkward silence ever. So do you have any questions at the end of the interview, right? And you're sitting there and you're like, "Yeah, no, really not, awkward silence," right? Well, here's some stuff that you all can talk about. So let me show you some of the things that went out, if I can tab over accurately. Okay. So, one of the things that went out, do you guys, how many of you looked at this? Online viral video chart? Thank you. The rest of you are big fat losers because you didn't, and let me show you why. Okay? Check this out. This is from Ad Age. So here's what you can do. Here's, these are the top viral videos from 2011. They are funny, they are entertaining, and they are interesting. Why would you not look at them? 95 million views when they introduced the new Old Spice guy. So it's no longer Isaiah Mustafa, it is now Fabio, and it's a very funny campaign. Here's the Volkswagen campaign from last year. Remember the, when the kid dressed up as Darth Vader and the dad started the car, right? He was trying to use the force, right? So they're gonna leverage off of this campaign for the Super Bowl, so next week, watch for what they're doing. And so you can see all these different things that you can click on. What a great thing to bring up in an interview if you're talking about social media. Did you see that Old Spice launched the new campaign, and Isaiah Mustafa's out and Fabio's in? He had 95 million views globally. That's a lot, right? Conversation started. All right. May not work for like a ticket party, I get that, but you know, that's not what we're talking about here. Now, you can also sign up for these free little e-newsletters, and then you get cool stuff like, okay, close your eyes so it don't make you dizzy. Cool stuff like this. Ad Age Stat of the Week. Another thing that you can talk about, real quickly. You might, you get these little short stories about what's happening in the industry. You can customize your preferences, you can learn about sports, you can learn about advertising, you name it. Here's another one. Ladies, who would not wish to examine this article? I ask you. Gentlemen, I apologize. Right? But this is from another one called Brand Channel. Brand Channel, online free e-newsletter, and this is an article about new Super Bowl advertisers prepared to sweat. And they talk about how the Super Bowl ads this year are selling for $3.5 million for a 30-second spot, and who are the big advertisers. So if you're going on an interview, yes?
Would you mention that's me with a dupe?
It is, as a matter of fact. He's been working out. I told you not to mess with him. So here's how, and there's a link there to register. So that is, so this is a, like, in-your-hands tool that you can take action on right now. Okay? Right now. The other thing that we have, how many of you have gone to Market You? That, okay? Good, a little bit better. Let's take a look at that. Okay. So here's Market You. This is the backbone for everything that we're doing here. This is your go-to spot. You know how you normally have to go out and like flail around in the web to try to find stuff? No more, stop doing that, go here. Here's what you're gonna find. You are going to find, first of all, full-time positions, not relevant to y'all, I get it, that are happening right now, they're looking for applicants right now, they want to fill these positions right this minute. Internships, need applicants right now, either for what's happening during the semester or summer. Okay? So this highlights a few. There's a quick login there to GoNova. Here's a link to your fall co-ops for 2012, and study abroad with internships. Everything's hot linked. I haven't built the rest of this right now, or yet, but I will. Competitions will put up career events and site visits that are coming up. Here's marketing news. How many of you read Ad Age, Adweek, or Brand Channel? Or at least look at their website? Thank you. Couple. You need to be there. You need to be there, again, just to get the basics, or subscribe to those newsletters. How many of you are interested in sports marketing? All right? Yeah?
Dr. Persha, reading the Ad Age or Brand Channel is equivalent to your friends who may be interested in financial services that are picking up the Wall Street Journal every day. And you're probably looking at that thinking, "That's not relevant for me." This is what's relevant. Ad Age, Brand Channel, Sports Business Journal.
Yep. Absolutely. And you don't have to sit down and spend an hour with this, right? Why drive yourself crazy? Pick out a few stories that are interested, and interesting to you, there's a lot of cool videos, there's a lot of good stuff on here, like, and I'm saying that not as a geeky academic, I'm saying it to somebody with two small children that has limited spare time, and I read these articles. Okay? Take the geek part out of it, if you can, I know that's hard. Okay? If you're interested in sports marketing, this is a place where you need to be. Here's the Sports Business Journal. Those of you interested in sports marketing, anybody know what an N score is? N score? All right. So Nielsen pairs up with a couple of market research firms to generate what are called N scores for sports figures. It's the equivalent of Q scores for celebrities. You guys know what a Q score is? Yes, no? Q score is a rating of a celebrity's marketability. Okay? N score is the rating of a sports person's marketability. Tom Brady's N score, for example, is 328. Okay? To give you a comparable number, Dirk Nowitzki, 132. LeBron James, 26. Oh, a big pardon, sorry. LeBron James, 131.[1581.71] Sorry. You guys are like, "What?" Martin Brodeur, 14. I know, for those of you hockey fans, just stay calm. Look at this nifty little packet that talks about all this stuff. Tracking sports celebrities. It's all available online through this particular site. Now, you can go to the website. You can follow them on Twitter, get an RSS feed, or go to their Facebook page for free. There are subscriptions available for college students. You have to pay for them. We get enough of you, we might be able to negotiate that. How many of you ladies are interested in fashion marketing? Do you read Women's Wear Daily? You need to, was that a yes? Thank you. You need to start. This is the equivalent of Ad Age for the advertising business. Women's Wear Daily is industry news. What's, what's here? What's now? What's happening? Follow them for free on Twitter, Facebook, et cetera. Okay? You can also sign up for an education subscription. I'll put all this up on Market U. Okay? Last thing, sneak preview to what's upcoming this week. Just got a couple more minutes and then I'm done. Here's an article from the Wall Street Journal about how resumes are becoming, uh, they're going away for many hiring firms. And there's all different kinds of things that they look at in order to figure out how to hire you. This tells you what they're looking at. Sorry. There's another one that talks about your reputation online and how companies are using your online reputation to help evaluate whether or not you're an influencer in your sphere. Are you tweeting? Are you posting? Are you blogging? Are you networking? And if so, how many people follow you? The more people follow you, the more marketable you are. And for many firms, the more desirable you are. Okay? So you can check those out when you pore over it, when it comes to you. Okay? Couple of other resources here. Insider's Edge. Now what's on Market U? Subset of Insider's Edge. How many of you get Insider's Edge and delete it and fess up? Yeah? Take a minute, five minutes, two minutes, one minute. Scroll down the hot links. Check it out. Okay? Career Center Network Newsletter. Including, you can click on this current on-campus recruiting bulletin. And it tells you who's interviewing right here, right now, what deadlines are coming up. Okay? How do I learn about marketing career options? Hot link here, also coincidentally on Market U. Okay? Let me show you where. Here's some professional associations. Here's your placement and salary statistics. And here's all of our marketing career resources. Okay? All there at your fingertips. Couple of things you want to focus on. Career Shift and Career Insider. If you come meet with me afterwards, I'll work you through the basics. Some of our other panelists will help you with more sophisticated stuff. Okay? Study abroad with internships. Look at all the different places you can go. And get job experience when you go. I know students have gone to Shanghai, London, both Rome programs and the Spain program. And re-entry is tough because you're coming back to beautiful Villanova, Pennsylvania, right, from Madrid. But what an experience they have. Has anybody done any of these over the summer? Yeah, how was it?
It was awesome. John Campbell wanted to freshen the air.
Yeah? What'd you do?
It was just this study abroad.
Wasn't the internship? How was Rome?
It was all right.
Yeah. It was fine. If you have to go back, you will. Yeah, I know. Twist your arm. And which one did you do? I can't remember. That's right. Do you speak Chinese? Uh huh. How was Shanghai? Shanghai is on fire, that place. It's crazy. It's an absolutely crazy place. Did you do an internship too? And what was your internship with?
I was with a finance.
Okay, gotcha. And what did you do for them?
I did, I started a branch of a company, so I took a marketing aspect.
So you're with, and you're, triple major? Yeah, triple major. Finance, marketing, and?
No, no.
Okay.
Management.
Okay. There you go. Don't mess with her, by the way. Just saying. Okay? So there's all these opportunities to go abroad and get some experience. So what else can you do right now? Master GoNova. Attend an internship and job search event. Sign up for some marketing site visits. Did you know that with GoNova, when new job postings come up in areas of your interest, they'll send you an email? Did you know that? Yeah. Couple nodding heads. Thank you. Pretty cool, huh? Does it work? Little bit, little bit. You can do a one-click search. You can post your resume to employers' resume books. You can learn how to search efficiently. There's countless, how many workshops are there through Undergraduate Career Center, Kevin?
Oh, lots.
A gajillion. A gajillion. And in six minutes, if you click on that link, it will take you to the online tutorials and you will be so much smarter than when you started that six-minute period. Okay? Six minutes! And it will save you hours later. Is that a fair statement?
Just to kind of a gut check.
Yep.
Does everybody know what GoNova is? Can we get one, one sentence description of GoNova? Is this, is, I was going to connect with them, with the employers, to analyze if you're in my association. Yep. It is the, the main site on, used on campus through the University Career Center and the Clay Center for postings of internship, full-time jobs, part-time jobs, internships, co-ops. And that also allows you to connect with employers that you might be seeking out as well.
Yep. Absolutely. Look at what's coming up. Spring Business and Arts Career Fair upcoming, right? But look at all these different career events that happen here. Here's New York City Big East Career Fair, Philadelphia Nonprofit Career Fair. So all these things are happening locally associated with Villanova. Look at some of these amazing site visits that you can sign up for. Fashion Marketing Day, Philly Ad Day, New York City Ad Day. You guys just came back from Madison Square Garden, right? Took 10 students to Madison? 25 students, I stand corrected, to Madison Square Garden. Did they like it?
Anybody in here go?
Did you? How was it?
That was really good.
What did you do?
Um, we had the president talk to us for about 20, 25 minutes.
Wow.
And talk to the place.
Yeah?
Watched the radio.
Did you really? Well, na, 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 na. That's pretty cool. Was it worth, was it worth the afternoon?
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. So there's events like that all the time. Businesses, sports, obviously, what just happened. We have Philly Fashion Trucks for those of you interested in fashion marketing. So you can get into some of these companies and see how they operate, make some contacts. So these are all things you could do right now and it only costs you an afternoon. And you might get to meet the president of Madison Square Garden and you might get to see a hockey game. So that's not so bad. Okay? So basically, last thing I'll tell you here, and then we're going to turn you loose to some breakout sessions. The only person that can market you is you. You have an enormous network of people here who are dying to help you. Dying to help you. Undergraduate Career Center, Clay Center staff, your marketing faculty. We want to help you get someplace where you're going to be happy and enjoy what you do. Okay? However, you guys have to help us get you started. You got to take ownership of this. The only person that can market you is you. Okay? It's not programmatic hires. You got to do some work here. But we can help you do that. And those jobs are out there. Those internships are out there. So we can help you develop your grant, your brand, your grand, your brand, right? You can land a terrific position. You will not live in a van down by the river. You will not eat ramen noodles for the rest of your life, right? You can have a great life in this field and there's so many opportunities to do so. There's so many opportunities to do so. We can help you get there. But you got to start taking action right now. You've got about 18 months until you graduate. Yeah. I'm saying. So if you want to add some of those line items to your resume, now is the time to start. You got to get on this. You really got to get on this. And there's some easy pickings here. Easy, easy, easy pickings. And there's a ton of stuff I haven't even talked about. This is just getting you going. Okay? So you need to get your game on and start to market you. Now, there's two pools of people, three pools of people. There's us guys, okay? And Mr. Mullen and I are the two advisors for the department. Lucky you. There's our amazing Clay Center staff and there's our, our amazing undergraduate Career Center staff. Okay? Again, everybody's ready to go to the mat for you. So you got a man up and get going. Or lady up. You know what I mean. Right? Okay? So here's what comes next. I'll see if there's any questions. And then we have three short sessions that are happening concurrently. Okay, sorry, four sessions that are happening concurrently. And you'll have to kind of self-select as to which one's going to be the best for you. The first one I'm going to do in room 2044. If you're not quite sure yet what some of your different career choices are, do I, what is sales? I'm not quite sure. What does that really mean? What do I do if I'm a brand manager? What's it like working in advertising? What are some of my other options in terms of career path? So you're really still trying to kind of suss that out? Come with me. Okay? If you have a sense for that direction, right? You thought about it and you kind of have a general direction that you want to go, but you need to work on some very concrete steps. And we'll give you some like take action right now kind of things that you can do to jumpstart that job search and internship search, sorry, then stay here. Okay? And Christine's going to help you out. If you're pretty far along in the internship search process and you feel like you're pretty proficient at that search process, you're going to go to 2045 with Kevin and you're going to drive that session. So you can ask questions about GoNova, Career Shift, Vault, all these really neat online resources. Okay? And he can help you get to very specific information. Last thing that will be happling, hap, hap, happening between now, now and four, you got that, right? Is the Personal Brand Checkup Resume Reviews. And we only have two staff members that are available to do that. But you can stop in, bring your resume and have somebody take a look. If you can't get to a human being today, then you can schedule an appointment at the Clay Center undergraduate, or, and we really push it to the Undergraduate Career Center, to get your resume reviewed. 10, 15 minutes? You'll be in much better shape than when you started. And that's true for every single person. Okay? Last thing is, we are going to pass to you these.
How do these, I think, net reviews of all the resume resources?
Okay. Do you guys have this? Yeah, yeah? Now you got this one. Okay. So these are all the resume resources on campus. Use them. They're free. Well, they're $50,000 that you're paying for tuition, right? But you can just pretend they're free. Okay? So these are places that you can go if you don't get your resume checked up today. Maybe you're not at that point. Okay? And then here are all the career posts. Yep.
February 2nd, we're having a resume review day in Valby Library. We're actually bringing employers to campus and they will look over your resume. So even if your resume is already in tip-top perfect shape, you can get it in front of an employer and who knows what they will do with it from there. But if you want tips from an employer about how to make it better, how to make it more strategic and targeted to what you want to do.
Excellent point, yep.
They're right there to tell you.
Yeah, and it's Valby. So you can even walk to that. And it's still free.
You can drop in anytime between 1:00 and 5:00.
Nice. So that's on here too. It's item number two. Do you guys have any questions for me before we go to the next round? Next round will be about 20 minutes. Then we'll turn you loose on the weekend. Going forward, we're going to see you guys again in the fall semester, your senior year. Any event that you come to will be business casual. Why do you think that I tortured you by making you get dressed up into business casual? Why do you think?
Getting us ready.
What's that?
Getting us ready.
Yep. It's time. This is a professional event and like I said, it's, you got to kind of get your head in the game. So when you're having these conversations, I want you to feel like grownups. Because you are. You really are. You look good, too. It's much nicer looking at and you all spiffed up, I have to say. No, I'm just kidding. You do look nice. Okay? But that's why. So when you go forward and you see these business casual, that's why. Because we want you to start thinking about this as a full-time class that you're going to do. Looking for that internship or job, it's really like taking another class. Okay? And you got to start thinking that way so that you can get the results that you want. Because again, we want you landed and happy and well-paid. I mean, this is what we want for you. Want you living in an awesome apartment, heading out to the clubs on the weekend, picking up chicks or meeting hot guys, right? And rocking it at your job. This is what we want for you. We really do. And I probably should have reversed the order of that. I understand. Right? But you get my point. We want you happy, healthy, and thriving. And we're here to help you get there. Okay? So we'll see you, well, we have to head upstairs, 2044, 2045. If you want that Action Plan Workshop, stay here. Okay? Thanks, everybody.